Good evening and welcome to the February 8th meeting of the Town of Foxborough School Committee. This evening, we have all members present except for Brent Ruder, who is not feeling well this evening and will not be joining us for the meeting. As is typical, we begin our meetings with open public comment. This evening, we have two people who have requested to speak at the open public comment section. I would remind everyone that as per our posted agenda, we have five minutes for open public comment. So I would ask each of those people that have asked to speak to limit their time to no more than three minutes, which will keep us close to our agenda schedule. So first on the list is Shelby Cornbluth.
Rob, we'll definitely stick to your agenda. Some of us have a concert to get to.
Okay.
That's right.
And if we don't show up, I think people will be quite upset with us.
Very true.
So Shelby Cornbluth, 20 Lotton Lane. "I'm here tonight after a number of absences, and still, nothing has seemed to change, except the well-being of our kids continues to decline. Every day, more and more information comes out about the ineffectiveness of masks, with studies showing the difference in COVID infection rates, hospitalizations, or deaths in areas with mandates versus areas with no difference between areas with mandates versus areas without mandates. Doctors in the CDC now admit that cloth masks, like the ones many of you have worn and continue to wear, do nothing except get dirty and unsanitary every time you touch it. You continue to hide behind the DESI mandate, while the Surgeon General of the United States has come out and said that there is a mental health pandemic among our youth and adolescents, with emergency room visits for anxiety and suicide skyrocketing. Did you ever consider the impact of the fear that you continue to push on these kids, who are at zero risk of serious illness or death from COVID would have? Well, we knew, it was obvious to many of us parents. You were supposed to be experts in children's education. You take classes on their emotional well-being. How could you not realize the impact all of this would have? Or were you complicit because of ESAR funds were linked to masking and testing policies? We want, we'd like transparency. We'd like to understand if the ESAR funds received were in exchange for masking and testing mandates, and if the state defined how these funds were spent, or if it's at the discretion of the school. And now, you're pushing social-emotional learning by panorama education, so you can teach our kids to feel even worse? Please just stop. Get back to teaching, math, science, English, history. Close the learning gap that these kids have seen over the past two years, and let parents make decisions on the health and well-being of their children. We are tired of you selling out our kids and their future. Thank you."
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, Mr. Pyres.
Hello. Joe Pyres, South Grove Street. The reason why I'm here tonight is because I'd like to talk about the masks. Like Shelby said, we've kind of been absent for a little bit. I had a wild moment at home with my daughter. The other day, she came home and had a story to tell. And her story was that one of her friends in her classroom was trying to address the teacher. The teacher had called on her, on him, and he was trying to convey something, and the teacher couldn't understand that child. So he kept going and trying to convey what he was trying to say, and he pulled his mask down, and the teacher immediately, "Put your mask back up." For some reason, that triggered my daughter. I don't know why. She just felt this urge, like, "Just take the mask off already," you know? So she came home and told me, and actually welled up, her eyes welled up. So for whatever reason, she felt connected to this child, who just couldn't communicate what he wanted to, to the teacher. It's not the teacher's fault, I'm not blaming the teacher or anything like that. But it was a moment that I was like, "Holy crap." Like, you've gone five months, basically. Kind of like, unopposed to the masks. She doesn't like them, but we don't talk about the masks. Me and my wife, we have a pretty hard leaning that children shouldn't have to wear masks. We don't talk about any of that at our home. My daughter has no bias. She's picking up these cues on her own, that masks aren't working, and masks are deterring her from learning, and she's feeling some emotion from it. So that's why I wanted to come here and tell you that little story. That's what prompted me. I think some children have reached their tipping point. It's been five months, and I think something needs to be done about it. And I haven't seen any action from this committee at all on any of these mask mandates. Nobody's speaking up about it. I mean, you guys should be waving the red flag at every single meeting, or ending with a conclusion saying, "Yeah, I'm still for or still against it." And one of the questions, before I go to the questions that I have, children right now don't wear masks, pretty much anywhere else except school. They play sports with no masks. They go to birthday parties with no masks. They go shopping with no masks. They do everything with no masks. Yep, but they gotta go to school, they gotta hop on a bus and wear masks. It's just, it's all political theater. It's an illusion of safety. You know, all you up here right now, for the most part, are wearing masks. It's nothing more than an illusion and fear, right? The very first time I came here, I said, "We gotta stop with the fear pump." This was like, six months ago, or five months ago when I came here. There's so much fear drummed up. Everybody's afraid. And these children are afraid, and you guys need to start leading. I also said, "You need to start leading and not following." That was like, the very first thing I said to you people. And I haven't seen any leadership. You guys have been fooled. It's, you know, Mark Twain once said, "I believe it's easier to fool a man than it is to convince a man he's been fooled." I think you've all been fooled. And I'm not happy about it. I have some questions. You guys always sit back, and you don't answer any questions. I know you have an agenda, but I got some questions. And you guys need to start answering this stuff.
Mr. Pyres.
Have you guys?
Mr. Pyres.
Yeah.
You have exceeded your three minutes at this point.
Okay. You said something about five minutes earlier. I got some questions. Have you guys been voting every month on this?
We are moving on.
Have you voted every month on this? Aren't you supposed to vote every single month on this?
Mr. Pyres.
Isn't that what you said?
We are moving on.
And are you doing it? Somebody answer me. Like, literally, somebody raise their hand and say, "Yeah, every single month, for five months, we've been voting on this."
Our stated policy is that we will discuss the status of vaccinations as it relates to the mask mandate. It is not, our stated policy is not that we will vote on the mask mandate, because as long as we are under DESI guidance, those are the rules that we have to follow.
There's no reason to vote, is that what it is? I mean, honestly, it's not a gotcha question. I'm just wondering, like...
Mr. Pyres.
Yeah.
You have exceeded your time limit.
Okay. Second is, are you gonna survey the parents? When are you guys gonna survey the parents on this?
Mr. Pyres.
In the town of Foxborough?
Mr. Pyres.
No answer, got it. Has DESI been made aware of Foxborough? Has anybody been made aware that a lot of people in Foxborough oppose the mask mandate?
Mr. Pyres, thank you for coming to the evening.
Like, does DESI know that there's a whole group of parents here in the whole town that don't believe they should send their children wearing a piece of cloth over their face?
Mr. Pyres, I have asked you respectfully, you have exceeded your time. Please move away from the table. You are welcome to go into your chair.
The last question I have, children, do you have a plan in place for IEPs, for all of these children who are gonna get left in the dust because of this? The Individual Education Plan. I'm a product of it. Have you guys been forecasting that? And thinking about all the children who are gonna get left behind?
Mr. Pyres, thank you for coming this evening.
Okay.
Thank you for sharing your comments with us. We will now move on to our next agenda item.
Next time, I'd like a full five minutes, because if we're allowed five minutes, that's what I want. And that's what the people should get. Not five, and then we need three to keep moving on.
Thank you very much for coming this evening.
You guys have some serious questions to answer.
Thank you for coming this evening.
Yeah.
Moving on to the next agenda item, approval of the meeting minutes. Meeting minutes from January 25th. Any questions or comments about those meeting minutes?
No.
Okay, thank you. So seeing or hearing none, may we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from last month's meetings.
Thank you very much. A second, please?
A second.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you very much.
I'm gonna have a stain.
Okay. So 301.
I'll go in here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, Dr. Bertus, your update.
Sure. So in connection to COVID, the town's positivity rate is at 16%. That was as of February 2nd, actually. And that the number of our cases that we've seen have, since January, have significantly dropped. So that's been the good news. We continue to look at our vaccination rates, because in order to lift the mask mandate that is required by us, by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, you have to be at 80% for the full staff and students. So we monitor that daily. We monitor how that changes. Currently, at the high school, we are at 79%. Our staff helps us in every single building with the vaccination rates. We also know that students, as far as grades seven or six and below, they weren't able to get vaccinated as early on as older students. So at the middle school, for example, right now, we have a 66% vaccination rate. At the Burl, a 46%, at the IGO, 59%, and at the Taylor, 60%. So we see our numbers that are increasing. We are very close to that 80%. At the high school, we are at 79. We have done everything that we can, as a district, to promote the vaccine clinics by hosting those, because we know that by DESI's regulations, we need to be at 80%. So we hosted one, two actually, in January. We have another one that we're hosting, because we have parents that are coming forward, asking us, "When are you going to host another one?" So that one will be on Monday, February 28th, at 6:30 to 8:30 in the IGO cafeteria. The other update that I had was with our principal search. Those are both, for both retiring principals, Mrs. Myers-Pacla of the high school, as well as Mrs. McCarthy, who's already retired. Those are both underway. As you know, Dr. Mello is leading those searches. And they began with the Burl actually starting having interviews last night, and will continue this week. And then, the high school search committee has already met once, and will continue next week, and then looking for interviews to start the beginning of March. And just as a reminder, it's the school committee meeting, March 22nd, is the goal, to be able to go through those very thorough processes and bring candidates here to introduce them to you at that meeting. The only other thing that I want to mention, that we're excited to see other signs of what we think of as more of a normal school year. When we see things like the BEEP program, that's sponsored by PTO at the Burl, those have started up at the end of January, having students being able to participate in after-school, you know, different activities, whether it's STEM clubs, or it's drawing, it's making jewelry. There's so many different things that they're doing. There's like, 157 students right now that are involved in that. We're going to be seeing on the agenda here, just in a few minutes, for your approval for some out-of-state travel for our students. So just, those are some examples of things that we're seeing as we're turning the corner and starting to see changes, and trying to get back to a more typical school year. So that's it for my updates.
Thank you. Just one moment. So I just, a question that I've had, or just something that I think we should all acknowledge. For the districts that we are seeing, you know, a step back from a mask, it is because they have reached, the school has reached that 80% vaccination rate. So King Philip being an example, their high school has reached the 80%, and they were able to revisit their policy and decide what was appropriate for their school, based upon the guidance of their local public health officials and state officials. Their middle school has also reached that. When we're, I know we're getting a lot of questions, you know, whether here or emails, when we're seeing schools or districts moving in that direction, it is because they have reached that 80% level. Is there any other reason that we, since any of the public school districts in Massachusetts, be able to move away from the, you know, everyone wears a mask policy?
No. And because we have, all Massachusetts public school districts are under that same mandate. If you reach the 80%, then the superintendent can file a waiver to be able to unmask, if you will. One of the changes that happened from the fall to January, and this was, I'm a parent of a King Philip student, so I can speak to this as a parent. They reached their 80% before the holidays. They put in for a waiver, it was accepted. They were able to unmask those that were vaccinated. If you were unvaccinated, at that time, you were still required to wear a mask. On January 10th, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education updated, when they said they were extending the mask requirement till February 28th. They also made a change. They said in that, if you reach the 80%, you are granted the waiver because you've applied for it, then the change is, if you're unvaccinated, it is highly recommended that you wear a mask. That's the difference. So there was some confusion. I can tell you by being a parent of KP students, that they then were maybe going against the mandate. They were not. It changed on January 10th with that update. That's the difference.
Okay. Thank you for that. Thank you for the additional clarification and the story about more detail was happening in King Philip. Thank you. Now, Michelle, you have a question?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So for the high school, we're at 79%. How did they determine that 79%? I just wanted to kind of understand that. Is that all students and faculty who've had both the first and second?
Correct. It is not the booster.
Okay.
It is considered the second. And we have to take, at the high school as an example, every single staff member. So we have other departments. So you take something like the technology department. They're housed in the high school. So we have to take everyone that works in the technology department there. Cafeteria, custodians, teachers, educational assistants, anyone. So we take that number of who is housed at the high school. Then we look at our total student population. We look to then see who is fully vaccinated. And again, we monitor that daily.
Right. So let me ask you this. Do you have, do you know, are there students, faculty, that have had the first shot but not the second?
Yes.
What I'm trying to determine is, how close are we to that 80%?
We, I honestly thought we were going to be there today for the high school. I did.
Right.
We're not. But I can tell you, as an example, there's 17 students that have had their first dose, that haven't had their second at the high school.
So once they have their second, are we at, I would assume that that would bump us over to 80?
It would bump us up.
So how do we have any knowledge as to how soon that second's gonna be? Did they just have their first at the last, at that boot?
I don't know who those students are, but I can tell you that we had a number of people that did come to the January 31st and got their first dose. We had 57 people, students, that attended that clinic. And out of those, there were a number of first dose. So I would anticipate that the high school's going to be there very, very soon.
So how many students is it? This seems like such a crazy question, but between 79% and 80%. Is it 10? Is it 15? That makes us...
We will get, if those students end up having those, we will be there.
So my question, I think for us, is if we're gonna be at 80% likely, potentially by the next meeting, then it's something that we need to discuss.
100%.
I can tell you that we've discussed it with our local health committee, with the Board of Health.
Right.
And with our other local health officials, with our nursing, and with our FEA. We are, we would be proposing that we would lift the mask if we hit the 80% at the high school, and that I complete that waiver and submit it to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. However, I will say that it's still, there are going to be a lot of people that regardless of if we get there and that takes place, are still going to want to wear the mask. A lot of staff members have said, "I'm vaccinated, but I'm still going to want to wear the mask."
That should be their choice. And if someone has a reason on a special day that they want to wear it and versus not want to wear it, then they should be able to do that.
Because no student or no staff member should ever feel as though, if they wanted to wear it, that they should not, because we're at that 80%.
So my question, and this is a point of order, is can we talk about this today? So that if we reach the 80% between now and the next time we meet, giving the authority to the superintendent, if we so decide to do that, to move forward with it, rather than have a delay?
We cannot, because it was not part of the posted agenda. We can make it a part of an informational. We could schedule a special discussion to do that. But we can't make a voting decision without having it be a part of a posted agenda.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. Can I just clarify something? I don't have our mask policy in front of us, but I believe, Michelle, please correct me if I'm wrong, didn't we, in the mask policy, give the superintendent the power to make the changes without a vote?
Yes, we did.
I think we did.
That's part of the policy.
I think it's part of the policy. So I don't think a vote, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know that a vote or a special meeting would be required.
It should not be, we've given the authority to do that, based on, it would be, the vote would be a revision to the policy, or that would be, the discussion is wrong. But we cannot make a voting decision. Anything that requires a voting decision, we cannot make, without having it be a part of a posted agenda.
Okay, so we can still talk about it from a discussion, or stand?
As part of, as part of other matters at the end, yes.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Joe, we're not gonna entertain questions right now, okay?
No questions, just a comment.
Okay, we're not, we're gonna, we're gonna move past that at this point, so, okay?
I was just gonna give a, 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 a...
Joe, just, we wanna try to keep to this discussion, if you don't mind, okay? Thank you. Any other, Richard, Sarah? Did you, I'm sorry, did you get all your questions answered? I jumped on without...
I think so.
Okay.
I might, something else might come to me, but I think so, at this point.
Okay. Thank you. Sarah, Richard?
No.
No, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
And it's great news about the BEEP, and it's great news about the, you can't see, you can see the smile underneath the mask, but...
And that's just...
Having been a Burl family, I know how the BEEP was such a big deal every year when those programs came out.
And I was at the Burl all morning. So that was, you know, just seeing the different, you know, postings of the different classes. So that's fresh, like, that was, it was exciting to see, to know. And then, so to find out then how many students were involved was great. It was great news.
Yeah.
Excuse me just for a second?
Yeah.
I do want to, I think we had another change, which is spectators at sporting events. I know my daughters enjoyed cheering on the Foxborough basketball teams. So thank you for that. I know the kids are really happy to be able to be back at the sporting events. So I just wanted to say thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Jacob Graves, any questions?
No.
Nope.
Perfect. Moving on to the next agenda item. Mr. McCabe is here.
Yes.
So...
And some students.
So if you guys want to step up, and Dr. Bertus or Dr. Mello, if you want to set this up for us, that would be greatly appreciated.
So I'm not sure if Mrs. Myers-Pacla, she was potentially going to be joining us by Zoom. And if she's not able to, I know that we're able to handle this without her because of the notes and everything we have, because of the concert that you heard about. Mrs. Tadoli is not here, because she's busy as well. But I think that this is an exciting, you know, to be able to listen.
Diana might be on the phone only if you assume she has her voice.
All right. So Mrs. Myers-Pacla, can you hear us? We'll see if she comes up.
Yes, I can.
There she is.
I can hear you.
Okay. So then, you know what? Since we can hear you, Mrs. Myers-Pacla, do you want to kind of set the stage as far as, because of the overnight travel things that are going to be talked about this evening? We have our wonderful DECA students already at the table. Not that you can see them.
So I will turn this back over to you if it gets a little noisy here. I'm sorry, I'm not in the best of locations for this meeting. But we're very excited about the potential of opening up overnight travel once again for our students, of course, with some conditions. So we are expecting perhaps that Mr. Cusek will be there to talk a bit about cheer. Mr. McCabe and our students are there to also talk about DECA and the state conference. And our music program is interested, of course. We have sent in our tapes for essentially Ellington. And if selected in the top 15 in the country, hoping to be able to travel to New York for the essentially Ellington competition there. So I will leave it at that. I'm just worried that it's gonna get noisy on my end. And I'll turn it back over to the superintendent. Dr. Bertus?
All right, thank you. So a little bit more information, we'll start with DECA. We have Mr. McCabe, who you know, has been leading the DECA program. How many years has it been?
This is our sixth year.
Six years. And every year, it grows, and then, that really, what the students are able to accomplish has continued to increase every year. So they're going to be speaking about the DECA conference that's coming up in Boston. And as Mrs. Myers-Pacla had mentioned, there's a lot of other things we have to follow. But I'll turn it over to you, John, so you can talk a little bit more.
Sure. I'll let them speak mostly on this, but I just wanted to first off say that very proud and excited for them. We've had all 24 of our current members qualify for states this year, which we've, we've never had a full, like, everyone qualify for states. So that was really a very great moment. So, you know, kudos to them for putting the work in and being dedicated to it, even with all the uncertainty of what's gonna actually happen. But I'll let them speak a little bit more about the state conference itself. And some of them have been there before, so, and before we had the whole pandemic happen, we had a few that were actually attended the last time we went.
So we're here today to express our desire to attend the upcoming Massachusetts State DECA Conference as full-time overnight participants. For many of us, this is our last year with DECA and potentially our last year with the conference. Most of our high school experience has been negatively impacted due to COVID. However, this executive board feels this is a fantastic opportunity to bond with fellow club members and to finally have a traditional conference as regularly scheduled. Due to the strict mask mandate throughout this conference, we believe that we will be a safe, we will be in a safe environment for the both participants and the administration that will be joining us, such as McCabe, and then we have one other chaperone. All participants and attendees must be vaccinated. Additionally, this event does not occur until the second week of March. And with cases in Massachusetts already at a steep decline based on January 17th data, we believe that the past surge in cases should not withhold us from staying overnight at this event.
Our club is also nearing 100% vaccination status and will be completely vaccinated by the time of the conference in order to align with Boston's current mandate and the mandate of the conference itself, while also providing an additional layer of safety and security when staying in hotels and participating in the conference. We understand the many implications that come with these types of decisions, but we wanted to let you know the consensus of all students participating. We believe allowing us to stay overnight is the best option and a chance to return to normalcy before many of us leave FHS. We believe allowing us to stay overnight is the best option and a chance to return to normalcy before many of us leave FHS.
Before we go much further, can I just ask you guys to introduce yourselves so everybody knows? I know you, but a lot of people here may not know you, and certainly the people that might be watching are either tonight or at a different time, may not know who you guys are, so if you just wouldn't mind telling us who you guys are, it'd be really great.
I'm Paige Gilmarten, and I'm the Vice President of Membership of DECA.
And you are a senior.
Yes, I'm a senior, sorry.
I'm Sumner Brown, and I'm the President of DECA, and I'm also a senior.
Thank you.
I'm Nora Tanyos, I am the Vice President of Community Outreach, and I'm also a senior.
I'm Amanda McCabe, I'm a junior, and I'm the Vice President of Publicity.
Thank you guys very much, makes it much easier to, you know, say thank you. Any questions, or I mean, I know it's been, it's been a couple of years since we've had this conversation, which is exciting, so. Questions from the committee or?
I'd just like to say bravo, I mean, the fact that the whole team qualified, so, so proud of you guys, oh, your hard work, especially with the adversity of COVID, definitely so proud that you're representing Foxborough. So I just wanted to say thank you and congratulations to all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say that I've, for some reason or another, have been at Copley Place, Heinz Convention Center, a number of times just happened to be there when DECA was going on.
You're like a groupie for DECA.
It's happened more than once, and I don't know why, but it's always, I find it just so exciting to see, you know, such groups of high school students, you know, wandering those halls, getting ready for your presentations and competitions and everything, and it is very exciting, so I'm, I'm excited for you to be able to have this opportunity, and it really, it's an important thing. I think it really is important because it's a unique competition in and of itself. And just all dressing up and being able to, to do that and, and meeting with the judges and all of that, so, very impressive, so congrats.
Congratulations, absolutely, Richard?
I was, I think your presentations were excellent, thanks so much for doing that, but I actually have a question. Has anyone attended this before?
Yes.
Okay, so that's good, that's a good answer.
Yes.
And what are you looking forward to for it? So I saw the agenda, and I kind of have a feeling of what happens at these events with students. But what are you guys looking forward to, maybe that gives me a little, I saw a little window of what's going to happen there? Like, what are you pumped for?
Oh, sorry to interrupt you.
Yeah, go, oh, good.
Personally, I love it because it gives you just, it's just a unique experience, as she said before. It's because you're experiencing business with people from all over your state, you're getting new points of view, you're getting new experiences, you're getting critiques from judges, which is helping me prepare because I want to go into college for business, which I never even thought about before I joined this club, so thank you, McCabe, for that, because now I've kind of found what I really love doing. So it's just a great experience to see how other people view business and to pick up new techniques and things like that while you're out there.
I'd also like to add that as a senior, I'm most excited for just going to this competition. I've, me and Sumner is my partner, we have placed, we have like qualified for states three times and have not been able to attend once, just due to different reasons, due to COVID. We made it to states virtually last year and placed eighth, but we would, that would have been our first year, like, able to go. My freshman year we placed and just weren't able to attend, so I'm really excited for, to be able to qualify and actually go this year, even if it will be the last time.
I just find it like, so I went my freshman year, and it was one of the, like, the best experiences I've had during my freshman year, even with COVID happening in March. I was just like so interesting to see what it was like to be like, just kind of get away from like my house for a little bit and not necessarily like go on a vacation with my parents, well.
Now we're going down a tough road.
But yeah, it was really fun my freshman year, and honestly, it's just, it's something I look forward to almost every year, and it would just be really great if we could go this year.
Well, thank you for that. In my, in my, in my work world, I work for inter-scholastic athletics across the state of Massachusetts, so I experience these type of events all the time, but the reason I asked you that question is because I think what our takeaway always has to be in this situation, or whether it's sports, whatever it might be, is I really love it when you, as the students, and, and the children, the kids in our schools shine to the public. Go to these events, go to the Heinz Auditorium, so that the people walking around the Heinz see our kids in Massachusetts doing what they do. I think that's a great message. If there's any message we do in schooling, it's about what our kids are being and what the future is. So I thank you for stepping up for that reason, because that's, that's one of the lights that I see in this, is when you're willing to step up, take on the state competition, represent the school, represent yourself, and represent all teenagers. So that's why I asked you, and thank you for that, I'm in full support.
All right, so I just have one really odd question, anybody interested? Anybody interested, because being a former Quiz Bowl person, anybody doing Quiz Bowl?
I did Quiz Bowl, the year that Paige couldn't, it was, there was the, there was a show that Mrs. Canfield was directing, so she couldn't go, so I competed in Quiz Bowl, so that's, that was the one year that I got to go.
Okay, so hint for you, right? There are, because I'm in this mode right now, there are any number of national scholarships available to people who have participated in any type of Quiz Bowl at a regional level. So if you're, if that's a thing, then there's a whole website I can send you about, because there's, there are specific scholarships available to people that have done Quiz Bowl, and it's on here, so you, you know, I don't know your plans are for after next year, but Quiz Bowl, get it on your, it doesn't say how many times you have done it, just have to have done it, so. Do it, and you, there's a whole world of scholarships opening up to you, so I told you it was a really odd question.
Thank you for that tidbit.
That's right, so, yeah, yeah, so Quiz Bowl, so thank you very much. There's also scholarships for tall people. No, no, yes, not just athletic scholarships, that is a whole, also an affinity group. If you're ever doing scholarship searches, that is one of the criteria that you can put in.
Six foot two for boys.
Yeah, tall people, not, not less tall people, but tall people, so, no, thank you guys very much. From a voting perspective, do we, we need to vote on each of these individually, I'm assuming?
I think you can go through and do it after the three.
Okay.
So the other, Mr. Cusack's at a game, so he's not going to be joining us this evening, but as far as the cheerleader competition in Orlando, that is in March, and there's a lot of planning that needs to take place with it being so far away. All of the different protocols that they would have to follow would be in play. At the same time, in this particular situation, most of the families end up going with the cheerleaders, so it's kind of a different one as well, but still, it's through, you know, supported through us, so we need to have your vote as far as out-of-state travel on that one. And then the third one is, as you're aware, it's by invitation only, as far as the tapes being submitted to Ellington, we don't know yet if that one, we're fingers crossed, I've heard the demos that they have submitted, and they are outstanding, as always. I don't know how, out of the five, I got to hear the three that they picked, because they were just amazing. But again, that would be 22 students if they were selected, and that would be in New York for an overnight.
Thank you.
And that's not until May.
Right, any other questions or comments about the other two trips?
No, I think it's just, it's great to see the students working hard, getting to show what they're doing, as Rich said, and I think it's just amazing that they're able to have these opportunities again, it's high time.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, also just to thank the chaperones and all the people that are guiding the students, so they're taking the time and leading to us, so huge thank you to them to take our kids and let them represent who they are.
I would just like to clarify, and just so if anybody's listening at home or anything like that, is that it's the parents are either paying, or it's through fundraising for these overnights and for the travel expenses, it's not the school that's paying for it. So what they're asking for us here is permission.
Permission.
Because it's a school-sponsored.
And that's part of it, like with the cheerleaders, it's to go that far, they needed, they need to know if they have permission because of all of the fundraising that they would be doing on their own in order to make that happen.
Right, and it's also the responsibility that we're sponsoring this, so we need to make sure that there's correct chaperones in place, and, and the chaperones will be there, especially if they're flying throughout. But as you mentioned, a lot of these, especially with the cheerleaders, families are likely going, at least some of the families will be going as well, so there'll be additional people around to help. Okay, that's all I had to say, just to clarify.
Thank you.
Thank you, so any, any other questions or comments?
The only other comment that I would make would be to our executive board for DECA, the letter that was submitted to myself and to Mrs. Myers-Pacla in order to request to be able to go, outstanding. When we think about business and everything you're trying to do with communication, reading the letter that you had sent collectively was so impressive, and it just really shows what you're getting out of DECA, as far as what it serves its purpose, but at the same time, just the way you presented yourself. I'm not surprised, but just wanted to make that comment too.
And I shared this with Dr. Bertos, that I didn't even know about the letter until after she got it, so.
I said, I'm so impressed by your students, and he didn't even know what I was talking about. I said, you haven't seen the letter that they wrote, it just was so impressive, so, nice job. Can't wait to hear how you do, thank you.
Thank you, thank you guys, so we have a motion to approve the?
You're looking this way, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the three different requests to travel out of state, for the school system to be supportive of these teams traveling out of state, I make that motion.
So overnight.
Overnight travel.
Overnight travel, right.
Thank you.
Overnight.
Second, Michelle, thank you, all in favor? 4-0-0, thank you very much, thank you guys, good luck.
Thank you so much.
Look forward to hearing the results.
John, do we need to approve your family vacation?
Thank you.
Happy to do that if you need any help.
And thank you from me, thank you for the students, thanks a bunch, everybody, we're so excited about this.
Thank you, Mrs. Myers-Pacla.
Wow, that was good.
She's like a voice from a thud.
Thank you, guys, moving on to our next-to-last agenda item of this evening, the superintendent's mid-cycle review.
Okay, so at this point in the year, we're at the midway point, and so this is really a discussion to check in, to let you know how I'm progressing on my goals that were presented to you two in the fall. And then at the same time, another piece that we've added over the years, going back actually to Bruce Gardner, who started this, was answering three different questions. What am I really proud of, what am I working really hard on, and then what challenges do I face? And that's something that we've continued every year, from when Mrs. Spinelli was here, and then with myself, and I have to tell you that it is something that I have found, and I've mentioned this before, really valuable, and the principals actually do this now for me in our conversations, because it really gives you a chance to pause and to reflect, and then at the same time, think about what has been accomplished. And at this time of year, a lot of times you think, are we making headway? And then when you stop to do this, whether it's the midway point or the end of the year, you realize how much collective work we've been able to accomplish. So what I'd like to do first is just to go through each of the five goals and just kind of talk a little bit about the progress today. The first one is professional practice, it's a goal that we all have, everyone that's an educator, and it's really about our professional growth, and to focus in an area that we've identified through going through that rubric that we all are evaluated on, as you know. So that goal, working to implement practices to address educational equity and inclusivity in supporting our students academically, supporting them behaviorally and socially and emotionally. You've heard a lot already here this year, so I won't belabor a lot of those different areas from the different presentations that we've had, but a couple that I just wanted to make note of, because it is about my learning and growth in order to then lead the school system. So by participating in one of the administrators' roundtable through William James College, that was something that I saw as an opportunity to be able to learn more, and I committed to that. And then the interesting thing is I'm the only superintendent in this roundtable. Everyone else from all the other school districts, we meet once a month, from 7:30 to 8:30 on a Friday morning, by Zoom. They're all Directors of Equity and Diversity and Inclusion in districts, so it's been a great opportunity to learn from them and their role, and then to really think about where we don't have that position in our district, and leading that work and what that looks like, what it encompasses. So that has been really eye-opening, but more eye-opening for me is I had applied through the Massachusetts Superintendent's Association for a pilot program that they were going to do this school year. They had a information session, if you will, by Zoom to really explain what it would entail in this pilot, and it was going to be led through two different, really highly respected educators in the field, and through Harvard Education with Dr. Lee Title, and then also Darnisa Jackson, Monta Jackson, excuse me. And that is taking 12 superintendents that are white and 12 superintendents that are of color, so different affinity groups, and going through, it's pretty much like a course all year long, and really looking at what does it lead, what does it take to lead in those districts, and then thinking about where we come from in our superintendency roles. It has been a lot of work, but it's been a wonderful professional growth experience and continues to be. So I was really fortunate to be accepted into that pilot program. The other areas that you've heard about is the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee, that I'm working to lead that committee in our work, and going back to our Plan for Success, you've heard about that and the action steps that are part of that group. That, I will tell you, we meet again on, on Thursday. What a wonderful, dedicated group of educators, and really dedicated to looking at how do we remove barriers for students? When we think about social-emotional, when we think about academics, when we think about behavior, everything that we're doing, and really looking deep into that work. The other MTSS, our Multi-Tierred System of Support, which incorporates diversity, equity, inclusion, when it looks at social-emotional and mental health, again, that work, we're in the first year of a three-year plan, that a lot of that is really looking at our structures and our systems, and what that looks like as we move forward. So that's been a lot of work on behalf of Dr. Mello, teachers, all of the people, principals, everyone that's in that work, and we know that it's going to continue, and you'll hear about it even more so in updates with the Plan for Success. The other opportunity as far as professional practice here was participating on a NEASK visit. I had not done that, in the past, I'd always heard about, it's one of the best learning experiences you can have, that it will be a lot of work and very intensive, and that is all true. I wanted to do that as we are, we're 10 years later from our last NEASK visit, and to, there's a new process, it looks different than it has 10 years ago, and to really understand from both sides, from what we'll be going through, through our self-study and getting ready for our collaborative conference, what that looks like when the team comes in, you know, there were parent surveys that were sent out from the high school regarding NEASK, trying to get information that way, all of the work that's taking place, setting our own goals and where our areas of improvement are, and then moving forward with that, but also understanding from a visiting team what they're looking for. So we've also had some of our own department heads go out and do some visiting NEASK visits as well, so I think that we're positioning ourselves really well to do that really good, hard work.
Excuse me, may I just ask a quick clarifying question, what is NEASK?
NEASK is the, thank you for that, it's the accreditation for our high school. So you want your high school to be accredited, and every 10 years, you go through a very intensive process of identifying what are your areas that you've deemed an area of improvement, setting that, and then you have a visiting team that comes in and looks at the goals that you've set and the work that you're doing, and to see if you're meeting that, and then also suggest any recommendations, and then also they make note of all of the commendations at the same time. Thank you, Sarah, we have so many acronyms, and we end up not explaining.
I'm learning.
So, yes, thank you for that. So I would, as you've seen here, I've said some progress as far as this professional practice goal, so. The student learning goal is one that, again, every educator has a professional practice goal and a student learning goal. This one, as you've seen here, again, I've noted some progress, a lot, whether it's been through school committee meetings, you've seen the work that we're doing in really implementing that multi-tiered system of support, MTSS, and then that again is going back to ensure equity, to ensure access, and then inclusivity of all students. Whether it's that MTSS committee, whether it's the DEI committee, whether it's looking at our results from our K-12 Culture and Climate Survey, and then how do we ensure that we are really hearing and meeting and removing those barriers? So just as an example, when we presented the Culture and Climate Survey data, we can look and see maybe really high numbers in that, I'm going to make this number up because I don't have the data in front of me, but if we said 95% feel that it is an inclusive environment, they strongly agree, agree that it is, that 5% that doesn't, as one of the conversations with the DEI committee, who makes up that 5%? It's really important to see, is it, is it a like group? Because if it is, then that's telling us that we're, we're not being as inclusive as we think that we are. Other things such as, we've only deployed that survey in English. We know that we have so many languages, so we will be deploying that survey in other languages. So it's really digging in deeper to some of those, asking a lot more questions as we look forward to move that work forward and to remove barriers, whether it's academically, socially, emotionally. And then, again, engaging in all my school visits, like walking through classrooms with principals and other people, and looking at what does our instructional practice look like? Are we removing barriers in classrooms for students? And having those conversations through those instructional walkthroughs, and then even our administrative meetings, we always have a piece of that, that's, it's, it's not just administrivia, it's really going back to an article talking about what's our belief system, what are we looking for, what do we see in classrooms and across schools? As far as district improvement, that one, you know very well from recent, the Plan for Success. And as far as identifying our action plans, you'll get an update at the end of the year on that and where we are, but we were very happy to be able to bring that to you most recently, and to have that one completed, so, meeting that goal. And then the next goal, the fourth one, which is all very familiar, working through, again, the pandemic and all that comes along with that. It really still can't be understated, the amount of work and effort and pivoting and time that it takes to be able to attend to what we know and what is unknown as we move forward. Because there are many changes, and there's many implications as a result of those changes, but as we've mentioned, we're starting to see that, you know, that brighter light with being able to have students to be able to travel. But at the same time, being able to make sure that we're securing the resources that we need, and I'm not talking just PPE, those kinds of things, it's really looking at the additional grants that we've written through, like the social-emotional, mental health grant through the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. That is what funded the Panorama Survey, to be able to have that screener, to look for any at-risk students when we think about the social-emotional, mental health piece. And then contract negotiations on the last one, we have six units, we are underway with two right now, we will We will be meeting with a third one, beginning that, I should say, with our Educational Assistance next week. We've been well underway with a Teachers Association and then we've also been in meeting with Transportation. And by the end of the school year, hopefully you will see that that one has been met, but there's a lot of work to be done between now and then on that goal. So that's the goals. As far as going to, the areas is really being where I'm proud and what I'm working hard on, they intersect. You've heard over and over how proud we are of our staff and our teachers and our students and everyone from nurses to any support staff and what they've been doing for students. We've heard over and over how hard it is this year when we didn't think that it was going to be as hard as it is because we thought, we're back, we're full, we ended the school year, having the structure of school is going to be a fix. But we've also been very aware that it's much more difficult and challenging than we thought for families, for students attending in class every day and then being in an environment that they're just, they haven't been used to in the last, you know, 18 months. So one of the comments here I have is the structure of school and staff has been more challenging and that they needed that structure more than ever, but attending to that structure has been more difficult than we have anticipated. And teachers and staff working really hard to attend to students' needs and being back in that structured environment, from an academic standpoint, but from that social, emotional standpoint, too. I'm in classrooms a lot and you see that with students. It's, they're needing to get back into that structure and it's hard and teachers and staff are working really hard to be able to have them be successful. Securing grants, whether it's for looking at staff members through interventionists, through social workers to be able to support the needs of students, we've all worked very much together in saying, how do they intersect? How can we leverage this grant with the other one? You've heard it through the budget process and how we're going to be able to put those resources in place, but then at the same time, how can we leverage them the most? And then really making sure that we keep our focus on our strategic objectives in the Plan for Success because that's the work and honestly, that's where we get the most joy, is really getting into the teaching and the learning and working on those goals and knowing that it can't wait. We need to continue to push forward, but at the same time, really attend to the needs that are in front of us. So the last thing, the challenges that I face, I think that these are like many districts when we're looking for key positions, it's hard to find. We're still trying to fill some educational assistant positions. We have some that are open. That is what is being experienced across many districts. And then at the same time, we know that we're going to be filling positions for next year and a lot of that work is going to be taking place. It's taking place now, this spring, and really preparing for next year because it's in hiring. And Foxborough is a destination of choice and we're very, you know, fortunate for that, but we want to make sure that we have the right people in the seat for these different positions and that is also for our teachers that are retiring. We've got such knowledge and experience that's going to go out the door with them. We hope they come back and sub when, you know, after they've retired because that has made a big difference this year. Many of our retired teachers, when we've had the need for subs, and we do all the time, to be able to have one of our retired teachers come back, it makes such a difference. So we're very happy for many of them for their next chapter, but at the same time, we've got a lot of shoes to fill.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Questions? Comments?
Thank you for all that you do. We really appreciate it.
Richard?
Yeah, thanks. Well, thanks for the detailed update, mid-year update with all these things to make us aware. We probably are aware of a lot of them, but to point it out to us and put it in front of us is all valuable. I'd also like to thank you personally for the individual effort you're putting forward with William James College and as well as the Learning and Leading Program. I think sometimes it goes unnoticed when the leader steps out in front and leads from the front of the crowd. And I think that that's a really important piece and you should be commended for that and I think it's valuable for your professional practice. So thank you for that.
Michelle?
I was just going to say thank you. I think it's nice to see it in a format. I'm a format girl. I like to see all that. This is really nice to, just hearing about it makes me tired. So I recognize how much you're doing and keeping your finger on so many different things when so much is changing. So that is appreciated and especially in regards with all the COVID and dealing with the teachers and students and all of that and all the changes that are happening and have been happening. So, and thank you for the update on that. Appreciate it.
I sure couldn't do it alone. I'm so lucky to have the administrative team that we do, the teachers and staff because it takes all of us.
I think that that's something that we've all learned over the past two years, how much teamwork, how important it really is because we can't do this alone. We've got to all work together and try and navigate through all of the roadblocks that keep being thrown up. So, thank you.
Thank you. I think, you know, I hope that you feel, I hope that you feel that I give you feedback often and that it's, as well as how much I admire and respect the work that you're doing here as well as the rest of the team. When I listen to people in public comments talk about leadership and coming from a place of fear or coming from a place of strength, what I really admire about the work that you are doing and that the administration is doing and that we're all doing is that we are demonstrating ourselves as leaders. We are not bowing and you have not bowed to public opinion, whether that is informed or not informed. And I think that the work that you're doing, not just on the topics that seem to be of importance to a sometimes inconsequential number of people, has not distracted you from the work that we need to do as a school district. And I think that's probably the most important thing as I look at the past year and as I prepared my remarks for the annual report this past week, although they were tardy, that we cannot forget that we are a school district, we are here to educate children. That is our foremost job. It's the most important thing we do. It's what drives all of us. As committee members, that's why we get involved. We want to help support the work that you are doing and the work that you do makes it very easy for us to support you. So thank you for this. I'm thrilled with the progress. I do think there's a lot of work still to, you know, still to go, as you've addressed, but we are making progress. As you know, I'm very excited about the new strategic plan. And as I was, again, as I was revisiting my notes from previous meetings as well as handouts and preparing my comments for the annual report, I spent a lot of time going back through all the work that was prepared for the multi-tiered system of support and just how much that fed other thoughts and fades into the strategic plan and the work that's, so it's really, it's really quite remarkable when you take a step back and look at how all the pieces are coming together based on the work that you're doing. So thank you for all of that. I appreciate the update today and I'm looking forward to the update at the end of the year as well as we, you know, measure where the progress was for this school year. So thank you.
And I'm very thankful to all my administrative folks, you as well, because again, none of this would happen without all of us doing, all rowing in the same direction.
Thank you. Last on the agenda are other matters. I know that we potentially want to do a discussion. Before we do that, are there any other matters that anybody else wants to discuss?
I have some other matters. Everybody sat on their hands when they asked for a rec, a rec representative, it's on the rec board, but just for the record, I love it. I always get to say something happy at the end. I get to add something and I'm going to tell you, we did have to move the Tais and Tiara stands, but it is still happening on March 25th. We are going to have that. We're looking for volunteers from the, if anyone needs, any high schoolers out there, kids need volunteer hours, we're looking for some volunteers. Again, a really fun, happy, upbeat event from 5:30 to 9:30 that night. We also, the rec is also wants to speak to the high school regarding decorating centerpieces, maybe art or a club or something, getting involved to maybe raffle off something, again, fun and exciting. And one other thing, the rec is hiring. So if anyone's looking for a summer job, we're looking for camp counselors, or the rec is, and you can just go to the website, everything's posted. So happy news from Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you. I'm just trying to think about the sitting on my hands. Thank you.
It's televised. It's televised. We have a record of it.
Thank you. Jacob or Grace, do you have any updates for this evening?
No, I just, I think students are really going to be very excited about the overnight travel thing. I know yesterday, some of my friends were texting me saying that when they talk about this, make sure that you say that you agree.
It's great. It's a great opportunity and that we can get back to that point for everybody because it is, it's a, you know, anybody is able to take advantage of that. It's wonderful. So thank you. Jacob?
I'm not really personally involved with any of the clubs or anything that they're doing, the overnight travel, but I am happy to see fellow students being able to have experiences like that.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Yukna?
No, I don't have anything.
Dr. Mello?
I have a couple of things. One, I just wanted to speak a little bit about the, I sat through data team meetings at almost every building, actually at every building, elementary building, last, the last two weeks. And that structure, because of the work on MTSS and the Planning for Success that we've done, has been much more procedural, like we've really systemized it and it's, this year has been very, very intentional based on the universal screeners that we have in place and the data that we're collecting. And because we have those structures and because everyone understands the purpose of them through our MTSS model, we've really been able to watch and monitor student progress probably more closely this year than we ever have. And I think that's important for people to understand because we do understand that there were some opportunity gaps last year, there was some unfinished learning, and this has allowed us to accelerate the intervention and accelerate the progress of students by attending attentionally to that data. So I want people at home to know that there's a lot of hard work going on for our students and in the interest of student learning. And that's the work that we care about the most because that's what we're here for. So when you just said that about teaching and learning, that's not what's going to be my other matter, I have one other one, but I just wanted to mention it because I think it's such a visible and clear indication that our MTSS work is well underway and that the teachers are engaged in it, that we think it's a priority and that's helping students. On a lighter note, Family Science Night is coming back this year, so that is an exciting indication that things are a little bit more the way that we remember them. So that will be for the bit, but it's held at the Ahearn on March 1st. And it is an event that the kids look forward to, it's a lot of fun, and we're really excited to get our scientists back in action. So keep it on your calendars.
Thank you. That's exciting. Dr. Bertus, are you there?
I think I've taken up a lot of time this evening.
Mr. Pearson?
I just wanted to touch base that you had some friends reach out to you to support the trips, right? And we thanked all the students for being here, but I think we should, the message that could probably go back is that we should thank the students for having great trips and being great people on trips. It makes our job easy to approve them, right? Because of what our students do and how they act on trips.
Hundred percent.
It makes the advisors an easy job to bring it to their administration that, so, you can thank the students for doing good work and as much as they asked you to mention it and support it, their efforts and what they have done in the past supports their own efforts. So I think it's important to know that the students leading the way has been helpful. But I'm glad you said that. I'm glad you said that.
And moving forward to continue that pattern.
That's kind of where I'm going with it.
I'm pulling the.
Just fill in the blanks.
Loop it together, let's just keep it going the same way we've been doing.
Thank you. And then Michelle?
So I think in kind of going on to the mask issue, with the thought and the goal that we'll be reaching 80% in the high school soon, you know, I support what you were saying before, Dr. Bertus, of moving forward to requesting a waiver. Do we have any ideas to how quickly they're processing?
I've heard it's pretty quick.
Okay.
Because it's the atestation that I have to do and have to have all the data to support to say, yes, we are indeed there.
Okay. And in regarding to the middle school and the elementary school, no matter how many times that this has come before us, I just seem to be unable to fully grasp, when we're talking about percentage points, how many people that tends to be. Because it's very kind of just a percentage that's sort of out there, but it doesn't really come home to what the reality is of how close really are we in these areas?
So Michelle, just so you have numbers, though, it's roughly 800 students per grouping, so 800 high school, 800 middle school, 800 elementary. Elementary split across three buildings.
Right. And so for the elementary schools, that was kind of my question is, is it each school would have to have a separate waiver?
It's the buildings.
Right. That's what I assumed, but I always like to make sure.
Can I ask one quick question and interject, please? The Burrow School, because it has preschool, is preschool included in that percentage? Okay.
Yes.
There's no vaccine available for under five yet, that's why I asked. Okay, thank you.
Right. You were digging something up, so I don't want to.
I was just going to tell you exactly as far as the elementary numbers because I have them, you know, every single, you know, I can tell you that at the high school, I'm looking at 139 staff and 779 students.
Okay.
So, you know, that as an example, I've got it by grade level at the middle school, so I know exactly what I'm looking at by grade level and then I have that for every elementary school student, school, too. And we're constantly looking at it updated, you know, it's based on real-time data, the exact enrollment. We're not going by our October 1st numbers, it's real-time enrollment.
Right. And, I mean, it appeared that the governor on Monday was implying that he may be following some of the other states like Connecticut and getting rid of the mask mandate. Who knows when that will be? But if that happens, are we kind of prepared to deal with that in the elementary schools and the middle schools as to making, because I foresee there's going to be a transition and I would expect that we've had some contact with some of the other schools to see what potential problems or, let me not call it problems, but roadblocks, things that are unexpected that come up when you're transitioning from the mask to optional mask.
I could tell you the roadblocks from what I've heard from colleagues was that before, talking about that change that I had said from the January, the roadblock was that if you are not vaccinated, back in December as an example, and you were at 80%, you were required to wear the mask. So then schools were forced to be like a mask police and that was the roadblock. You can't, because teachers don't know who is vaccinated and who is not. So it made it really impossible. So then once that change happened in January, that was huge for superintendents that had been saying it needs to be highly recommended, which was, if you think back to when we went into the summer and what it looked like for our extended year in the summer, it was recommended at that time. So it went back to that. So that was the roadblock that's there. I can also tell you that from colleagues whose high schools, it's the high schools that have been at the 80%, what they have seen is, you would think masks are off and they're not. I can tell you even the NEASK visit that I did, I was in a high school that was at the 80%. Everywhere, I saw more masks than not masks at that time. So again, it's the messaging and so as far as the transition, I think that part of that is the conversations that we're having because you might still want to wear your mask because of someone that you live with at home, whatever the reason is and that people, and I can tell you many staff have said, I'm vaccinated, but if we get to that point, I'm still wearing my mask because I want to. That's, it's really about making sure that people absolutely do what makes you feel comfortable. And we also know that we're going to have families that if we're at that point with people that are not wearing masks, we have families that are still not wanting to send their students to school because they're on the other side.
Yep.
So we have both sides. So it's going to be still conversations and again, what's your comfort level?
Right, okay.
I think we talk a lot about equity and my, to your point about that, the commissioners We talk a lot about equity in my, to your point about back, the commissioner's old policy on, if you're vaccinated, you have to wear a mask. I, I wasn't a fan of that, just being honest, because it became masked police, like you said, it became a challenge for the faculty and students and things like that, but I just think it's really important going forward for everyone to, for the theme really to be, should everything lift that people should feel comfortable to do what they want to do, to wear a mask, to not wear a mask, and just be accepting of, of others, people's, you know, choices and what they decide to do? You know, I think that's really important going forward, because I think that, that in, in of itself could be a roadblock. Why are you wearing that? You know, things like that. I don't know how you over, overcome that, but I, I feel like it should be something that we're aware of, just respect other people's sort of choices, for sure, you know? I mean, that goes without saying, but it's definitely something I think of as maybe just something to be mindful of going forward to, to answer your question if I could.
But if we get, if we are at that 80% as soon as we're there, my plan is to apply for that waiver.
Any other questions, Michelle?
No, I think that, Michelle, you brought up an interesting, like, an interesting point about the, I think you touched on the policy, like, we, we are clear that, I don't think we need a kind of vote, anything like that, and then down the road, if the governor does something, then I think.
Then the governor does something.
Yeah, then, then we address it at that point, so.
Right. I mean, that, I sort of expect if that happens, it'll be in, you know, we'll, we'll know right away, but we don't know how much lead wave or lead time we're going to know about. So that, that's just why I was bringing it up, based on past experiences of how much lead time the schools have been given.
It's not even 24 hours when we're.
Right. It'll be a Friday that we'll know about. Right, at 5 o'clock. So, but, thank you. Thank you for kind of being on top of that. Appreciate it.
Right. And then.
Can I ask you a question? Are we waiting for the governor or the commissioner?
Commissioner.
Commissioner.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, because, yeah, the governor's not in the, yeah, I think we're waiting for the commissioner, right?
Yeah, the governor made a comment that he expects the commissioner to.
Correct, yeah, 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 but, but I, I think it's the commissioner that's holding the cards.
But we know it's really coming from, right.
Well, no, no, well, I understand.
Coming down the line.
I understand that, but the governor has walked, we very clearly walked away from being in, in the bully pulpit this whole year, so the commissioners have been holding the cards for a long time.
Right.
So, yeah, okay, thank you.
Technically, it is the commissioner.
That's what I, that's what I wanted to make sure.
And that's the important one.
Thank you.
I wasn't trying to, I was just, I thought I was, I was missing something, I was like, oh, oh.
Yeah.
But I.
No, you're right. Sorry.
So, and then, Dr. Burdos, just one more time, because I didn't write it down as a reminder, when is the next clinic?
On February 28th, Monday, from 6:30 to 8:30 PM in the Igo Cafeteria. I'm just confirming that I'm remembering that correctly. Yes.
Just, we'll, we'll bookend the meeting with that. So, any other questions or comments for this evening? No? So a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much. Thank you for watching.